Good evening. The 54th meeting of the 73rd term of your Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As it relates to instructions from our mayor, please ensure that you have masks on at all times. The council is fully vaxxed, as well as boosted a couple times. Some members have elected to wear masks, others have not. When you're speaking, obviously you have the ability of removing your mask. We ask all members of the general public to ensure that their cell phones or any electronic devices are turned off or at a minimum on silent, not to interrupt today's proceedings. Our invocation this evening will be delivered by the Reverend Heber Brown from the Black Church Food Security Network. It is our pleasure to welcome you here. You've not only been a friend to this council, but you've also been a very familiar face. I'm pretty sure you've done it several times, and we are happy to have you back, Reverend Heber.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to my councilman, Mark Conway, for the invitation to be a part of this great experience as well. Shall we pray? Most gracious God, that is recognized and reverenced by many names, we bow in humble spirit to the majesty of who you are. Thank you for bringing us to this moment during the calendar and the turgic year where so many sacred observances overlap, from Ramadan to Lent to Passover and more. Communities of diverse religious expression are all endeavoring to draw closer to you. That is my prayer for those who gather in these important offices in this chamber tonight. Help them draw closer to you, to your spirit, to your wisdom, to your guidance. Help them to remember the poor, the powerless, the brokenhearted, the prisoners, and the sick. Help them and us to remember the children of this city, the elders, and the families that are relying on them. May service with integrity be their highest ambition, and even in the years to come, when all of our names are far in the past, may the fruit of their labor yet live, providing abundance, joy, human flourishing, and justice for generations to come. It's in your precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I would like to remind all members that during the time of invocation, the door is to remain shut at all times. The door will be open once the invocation is complete. At this time, I will ask us to turn towards the flag to state the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Reverend Brown, for that amazing invocation. At this time, we're going to turn things over to our showcase. For our showcase this evening, it is my pleasure to welcome Ms. Alexandria Warwick Adams, the Executive Director of Elevate Baltimore Incorporated. Elevate Baltimore Incorporated is an initiative working to ensure that students succeed in school and in life. They provide out-of-school time opportunities, school-based health services, and resources, support, and outreach for families they serve. Ms. Warwick Adams, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you all, council, for the time to share a little bit about Elevate Baltimore. As Mr. President said, I am Alex Warwick Adams, Executive Director of Elevate Baltimore. We are a local Baltimore-based nonprofit that partners with schools, families, and the community to ensure that every student is prepared for high school, college, career, and life. We do that through a few different programmatic strategies and interventions, including our three pillars, which include our extended learning opportunities, family-community engagement, and health and wellness. I'm going to talk to you just a little bit about each item. You have information in your packets, and you're definitely welcome to reach out to us if you have any questions or have opportunities for partnership. So Elevate Baltimore was launched in 2009 as a strategy under another organization. We became an independent black-led nonprofit in 2018, moved out of fiscal sponsorship in 2021. Currently, we partner with 16 schools and programs as the community school lead agency partner, offering eight programs for after-school, eight programs for summer, serving on average a little bit over 800 students every year. We are also the operator of the first adult high school in the state of Maryland housed here in South Baltimore, the South Baltimore Adult High School. At capacity, we are able to serve 300 students across the state of Maryland. Currently, we have a little over 40 students enrolled in the program, taking a little bit over 80 courses. We have been blessed to usher the first cohort of graduates out of the South Baltimore Adult High School this past January and February, so we are well on our way to continuing the mission of ensuring that all students, regardless of age, are meeting their educational outcomes as well as their benchmarks. The other things I just wanted to share just briefly with everybody is just some opportunities for collaboration and some highlights around our programming. We offer the Elevate Freedom School Initiative, which is our signature summer literacy experience. Some of you may have received invitations to become a guest reader with us this summer. We hope that you'll have an opportunity to come visit us at a Freedom School location. This year, we will be serving, fingers crossed, with funding, nine program locations. We have eight program locations confirmed, serving students in rising second grade through eighth grade, with the hopes of serving a small cohort of high school students through an earn-and-learn project that we are excited to launch. It is our pleasure to serve in multiple communities across the city. Although we are a national strategy, we are part of two strategies that are braided, that braid funding together, including the Family League of Baltimore's Community School Strategy, as well as City Schools' Concentration of Poverty. A couple of items that I just definitely want to highlight as you are looking for other ways to get involved with Elevate and other organizations, you know, what are ways that you all, as council, can continue to identify ways to break down the silos? As organizations, we are continuing to try to identify ways that we can lift up opportunities for students, families, and communities, so that they can have easier access to services and supports. I know I have a very brief amount of time, so I'm not going to belabor that, but we thank you, and we are honored to serve the Baltimore City community. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. Warwick Adams. We give our round of applause. Ms., did you provide the website, or phone number, or email address?
Thank you. You can reach us on all social medias at Elevate, E-L-E-V-the-number-eight-Baltimore. You can also reach us at info@elevatebaltimore.org. You could also reach me directly. My cellphone is Public Information, area code 503-410-1882. I'm originally from Portland, and I keep my number for my mother.
Well, thank you so much. Elevate is an amazing program. I have the opportunity to read every summer at one of the Freedom Academies, and I suggest to all council members that you take the time and opportunity to do so. So again, thank you so much. At this time, Madam Clerk, if we could please call the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you so much. At this time, we're going to proceed to adoption of journal.
Mr. President, the journal for the March 27, 2023 proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, hearing and seeing none, we will adopt the journal. Hearing, signal objection, the journal is now adopted. Communications from the mayor can be found at the beginning of page two of our agenda before we start today's proceedings. We do have two special guests that we're going to bring up and provide floor privileges to. First, we're going to go to Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I just wanted to take a moment to celebrate a legendary educator in South Baltimore, Ms. Selena Ella Hines. She was the last surviving sister of Mr. Clarence D. Burns. He was the first African-American mayor of the city of Baltimore, and I brought his grandson here today, not only, I brought her grandson here today, excuse me, and my mentor for over 20 years now, to celebrate her and to provide her with the due, the due appreciation for her legacy of education in Cherry Hill, but also just being a wonderful community pillar, not only in Cherry Hill, but all throughout Baltimore City. So, Sean.
The City Council of Baltimore resolution, be it hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore extends its sincere sympathies to the family of Selena Ella Hines, April 23, 1924, to March 15, 2023. She was 98 years old. This entire membership extends its respectful condolences and directs this resolution to be presented on the third day of April, 2023, signed by the President Nicholas J. Mosby and Councilwoman Porter. Thank you.
Take a picture. You want to step up, Madam? Counsel, all right, don't fall off. So for those who don't know, this chamber is named after her brother. And then we also have one additional special presentation by Councilwoman Glover.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call up our 2023 champions of Henderson Hopkins Middle School that won a championship this year. Y'all stand up. Come on, y'all, we can do better than next. Come on, come on, clap it up for them. That's what I'm talking about. So, you know, throughout the whole season, you know, Henderson Hopkins lost three games to the undefeated Roland Park, and during a championship, when they counted, they won the championship. So I want to say congratulations to these young women. I want to also acknowledge one of my colleagues, Councilwoman Danny McCray, who also played basketball for high school. So Danny McCray, if you could stand up, Councilwoman, and just give some words of encouragement to our, our young girls. Thank you. I know I put you on the spot, I appreciate it.
Hold on, please, one second. So at this time, the body will recognize Chairwoman McCray. Floor is yours.
So ladies, I'm going to be brief. As Angel Reese said last night at her press conference, I want you all to unapologetically be you, regardless of where you're from, and just be yourself. Be yourself. These championships, these goals that you're going to continue to, to reach in life, be yourself and be unapologetically you.
Can we move some of them up front, so you guys can crowd, we're not going to get you, you guys should be between you. Come on, move on. Or maybe you guys squeeze in here. Come on. You try squeezing right here. There we go.
How old is she? She's in second grade.
All right, and last but not least, I want to also acknowledge, before I come up, our Senator of the 45th District, Corey McCray, who also donated to the foods and the gifts that you guys received today. So I want to say thank you to our Senator, who was also at the games with our mayor. So again, I appreciate you guys, and just continue to dream on.
We're going to take a quick picture. Give a check, Kool-Aid smile. All right, come on, give it up for the Baltimore City Middle School Champions. We could take a couple minutes out of our time and out of our meeting to recognize our young folks. You know, when we turn on the news or we look at a newspaper, typically, we hear negativity and we see negativity about our young folks, and a lot of times, we take for granted some of small accomplishments, but these young ladies, they fought all season, they lost to this team three times, they were blown out a couple times, but they came together, collectively won. So, you know, it's really important that we always recognize our young folks. So thank you, Councilman Glover, for bringing them to City Hall and presenting them in front of the entire city. At this time, Madam Clerk, please go into executive nominations.
EA23-0186, David Kramer, Member, Administrative Charging Committee, District Four.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA23-0187, Tiara M. Hucks, Member, Administrative Changing Committee, District Three.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA23-0188, Raymond C. Kelly, Member, Administrative Charging Committee, District Seven.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA23-0189, Kim Rogers, Member, Administrative Charging Committee.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. At this time, we're going to go into bills on first reader. Madam Clerk, please read the first bill.
City Council Bill 23-0370, zoning use regulation, residential care facilities, age restricted. For the purpose of permitting certain residential care facilities in the EC2 zoning district as a conditional use requiring approval by ordinance of the mayor and city council and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors Conway.
At this time, the body would like to call on the chair of the committee, as well as sponsor of the bill, not chair of the committee, sponsor of the bill, Chairman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this bill is really geared toward creating an opportunity for housing on educational campuses across the city. This is a trend that we're seeing across the nation, where there are opportunities for nursing schools and otherwise to learn and work in residential care facilities, and so this would allow for residential care facilities, specifically this, for tenants that are 62 and older, to work on educational campuses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0371, zoning, conditional use, residential care facility, age restricted, 201 Homeland Avenue and a portion of Block 5027, Lot 003. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a residential care facility, age restricted, with 171 units on the property known as 201 Homeland Avenue, Block 5027, Lot 005, and a portion of Block 5027, Lot 003, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque, providing for a certain contingency, providing for a special effective date. Sponsors Conway.
At this time, the body would like to recognize Chair Minn Conway. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this is just a companion bill that goes along with the, of course, the one I just announced, that would create the opportunity for this for Notre Dame in my district. Thank you.
Thank you. This bill has been assigned to ECD as well. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 23-0372, Office of City Stat, Establishment and Administration. For the purpose of establishing the Office of City Stat, defining certain terms, providing for the appointment and confirmation of the Director of the Office, establishing the power and duties of the Office, providing for a staff and budget for the Office, establishing a data-driven officer for each principal agency of the Office, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors Conway and Mosby.
This time, the body would like to call on Chairman Conway. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, this is a big one. This is a big deal. As you all know, I used to serve as the Acting Director of the Office of City Stat, and, you know, it's been really one of my greatest things that I've been thinking about, is what we can do to get city operations back on track. We've really been struggling since the pandemic, and City Stat has been one of those key endeavors. So here, we establish the Office of City Stat as a city agency, which would do some really important pieces. Historically, the Office of City Stat has been, in many ways, a central nervous system for city government, helping us understand, using data and analytics, how our agencies are doing, and whether or not they're meeting the needs of our, of our residents. And this bill will establish it as an office. It will create yearly reports for each of our core agencies, have them report out to us as a city council, which has not historically been the case, which is really, really important for us to really understand what's going on within our departments. And then it would also create a data-driven officer in each of the agencies. That could be appointed, of course, by the director, that's using data, using analytics, to always be thinking on the cutting-edge for our agency, so that we could get the greatest performance out of our agencies. So really, really excited about this bill. I think it's going to be really important for the stability of the STAT program going forward, and I encourage and look forward to any support from my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I see the hand raised of Councilmember Bullock, Vice President Middleton, Councilwoman Dorsey, Councilwoman Torrance, Councilwoman Ramos. Thank you. At this time, that bill will be assigned to SGO. Madam Clerk.
City Council Resolution 23-0163R, informational hearing, Baltimore City disaster preparedness. For the purpose of inviting representatives from the Office of Emergency Management, the Baltimore City Fire Department, the Baltimore Police Department, the Department of Transportation, Baltimore City Information Technology, and other relevant stakeholders to brief the city council on the city's level of preparedness for disaster, including relevant plans and procedures for natural or biological disasters, acts of terrorism, terrorism, and major cybersecurity threats. Sponsor Stokes.
This bill will be assigned to SGO as well. Madam Clerk.
City Council Resolution 23-0164R, informational hearing, Board of School Commissioners, reporting and structure. For the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners and other relevant stakeholders to brief the city council on the current structure of the Board of School Commissioners, including member responsibilities and reporting practices. Sponsor Stokes.
This bill will be assigned to education, workforce, and youth. Madam Clerk.
City Council Resolution 23-0165R, informational hearing, trauma and violence in Baltimore City, involvement and assistance from city hospitals. For the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Health Department, the Baltimore Police Department, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, and city hospitals, including the Johns Hopkins Hospitals, MedStar Health, Mercy Medical Center, and the University of Maryland Medical Center, to engage in a discussion with the city council on how city hospitals could be better utilized to assist with ongoing violence and related trauma in Baltimore City, including opportunities for future involvement and intervention. Sponsor Stokes.
This resolution's been assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. At this time, we're going to turn to consent calendar on Section A of the back of the agenda as their motion to approve. Please use your mic. All right, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the consent calendar is now approved. We will now move to bills on second reader. Before we do so, we'd like to call on Chairman Costello. Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we'll be in short titles for duration of the meeting. Hearing and seeing no objection, we are in short titles. The first committee, we're going to go to ECD. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
City Council Bill 22-0322, zoning, conditional use, conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 1801 Highland Street.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number 22-0322, this bill was heard on March 28, 2023. I move the findings of facts.
Is there a second? It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Madam Vice President.
I move the amendment.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are approved. Madam Vice President.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill will be printed for third reading. Next, we're going to go to legislative, rules and legislative oversight. Madam Clerk, please read the bill.
EA23-0180, Rachel Marquez, Member, Commission for Women, District 14.
Chairman Schleifer, I yield the floor to you.
The committee heard this, six executive appointment nominations on March 30, 2023, and we're reporting all of them favorable, and so I'd like to move this nomination favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The recommendation is confirmed. Madam Clerk.
EA23-0181, Flor de Maria Gusti, Member, Baltimore Hispanic Commission, District Five.
Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The recommendation is confirmed. Madam Clerk.
EA23-0182, Kevin Griffin Moreno, Member, Baltimore Hispanic Commission, District 14.
Mr. Clerk. Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This item is confirmed. Madam Clerk.
EA23-0183, Marley Cardona Maas, MA, Member, Baltimore Hispanic Commission, District One.
Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The recommendation is confirmed. Madam Clerk.
EA23-0184, Juliana Valencia Banks, Member, Baltimore Hispanic Commission, District Seven.
Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The recommendation is confirmed. Madam Clerk.
EA23-0185, Lydia Walter Rodriguez, Member, Baltimore Hispanic Commission, District Two.
Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The recommendation is confirmed. Next, we're going to go to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first bill.
22-0125R, informational hearing, occupancy permits, inspections, and code enforcement.
The body would like to recognize Chair of the committee, Chairman Costello. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee held a hearing on this topic. We had a very productive conversation with agencies. At this time, I move the bill favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill will be printed for third reading. At this time, we're going to turn to third reading for final passage. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first bill.
City Council Bill 22-0262, Landmark List Exteriors, Baltimore City Engine Company, 14th Firehouse. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
The bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0263, Landmark List Exteriors, Harlem Theater. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
The bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0264, Landmark List Exteriors, Canton Railroad Transfer Bridge. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
The bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0265, Landmark List Exteriors, 3818 Roland Avenue. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
The bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0277, Landmark List Reed Callaway House. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
The bill is approved. Next, we're going to go to committee amendments. Just to be clear, we want to make sure that Bill number 22-012R, informational hearing, occupancy permits, inspections, and code enforcement, I'm pretty sure we did, but just to double-check, this bill will be printed for third reading. We voted it out of second reader to third, so we'll still have another opportunity to talk about it. At this time, we're going to go to committee announcements. First up, we're going to go to ECD. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Economic and Community Development Committee will hear Bill number 23- The Economic and Community Development Committee will hear bill number 23 dash oh-three-five-two on April 25th, 2023, at 2:01 PM, and that city property renaming playground and pavilion at Alhambra Park after Phyllis Gilmore. And then also on April 25th, 2023, at 2:05 PM, we will hear bill number 23 dash oh-three-five-three, which is the re-announcement for the voting session of the Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission. And then on May 2nd, 2022, at 2:05 PM, bill number 23 dash oh-three-five-nine, that's the rezoning of 600 North Paca Street. This is also a re-announcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Next up, we're going to education, workforce, and youth. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, we have health, environment, and technology. Thank you, Madam Chair. Next up, public safety, government operations. Next up, rules and legislative oversight. The chair has recognized you.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold a hearing on bill number EA 23 dash zero-one-seven-nine on April 17th at 1:15 PM on John A. McCauley, Member of the Board of Ethics. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And then last but certainly not least, Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing tomorrow morning, 9:59 AM. Council Bill 22 dash zero-two-seven-one, sale of property, 1101 Winston Avenue, is at the request of DHCD. Just a note, we also have other committee hearings tomorrow for a number of supplementaries. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, May 25th at 3:00 PM. Bill number to be announced at a later date. This is ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. This will be the fiscal year 2024 budget overview with Bureau of Budget and Management Research. That same day at 3:01 PM, bill number to be announced at a later date. We will hear mayor and city council resolution on operating budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. This will be the fiscal year 2024 budget overview for city schools. That same day, May 25th at 6:00 PM, bill number to be announced at a later date, annual property tax fiscal year 2024. This hearing is also referred to as Baltimore City Council Taxpayers Night. Taxpayers Night provides residents of Baltimore City the unique opportunity to share comments and concerns about the city's budget. Ways and Means Committee will start day one of budget hearings on Tuesday, May 30th, 2023, in council chambers. Bill number to be announced at a later date. Day one includes capital budget, visit Baltimore, American Rescue Plan, act spending, city administrator's office, charm TV, Baltimore City Fire Department, Office of Emergency Management, and Baltimore City Fire Department. Hearings run 9:00 AM through 10:00 PM with lunch breaks at 12:00 noon and 5:30 PM. Same times for all of the following five, which I am not going to repeat. Wednesday, May 31st, bill number at a later date, ordinance of estimates for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, Baltimore Development Corporation, Department of Finance, Bureau of Budget and Management Research, Finance Department, Law Department, Mayor's Office of Minority and Women-owned Small Business Development, Baltimore City Information Technology, B-SIT along with broadband digital equity as well at Office, as well as the Chief Data Officer, and Department of Public Works. Thursday, June 1st, same committee, same issue with the bill number, same bill, Board of Liquor License Commissioners, Baltimore Convention Center, Parking Authority of Baltimore City, Office of the Inspector General, Department of Human Resources, Office of Labor Commissioner, Department of Transportation, Enoch Pratt Free Library. That same day, different bill number. This is the mayor and city council resolution on Baltimore City Public School System. We will hear the operating budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. That starts at 6:30 PM that day. Friday, June 2nd, Ways and Means Committee, bill number to be introduced at a later date, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. We have Department of Recreation and Parks, Compteur's Office, Environmental Control Board, Office of Equity and Civil Rights, Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, Mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation, and Baltimore Office of Promotion in the Arts. Monday, June 5th, Ways and Means Committee, bill number to be announced at a later date, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. We have Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, Board of Municipal Zoning Appeals, Department of Housing and Community Development, Live Baltimore, Sheriff's Office, State's Attorney's Office, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement. And finally, Tuesday, June 6th, 2023, Ways and Means Committee, bill number to be announced at a later date, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. We have Health Department, Planning, CHAP, Mayor's Office of Employment Development, Department of General Services, and closing out with Baltimore City Police Department. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That wraps up our committee announcements. Next, we're going to go to regular announcements. Are there any regular announcements? Hearing and seeing no regular announcements. What we're going to do is, before we adjourn, we're going to go back to 22 dash zero-one-two-R, informational hearing, occupancy, I'm sorry, 22 dash zero-one-two-five-R, informational hearing, occupancy permits, and inspections on code enforcement. And the Executive Secretary, Natwana Austin, has informed us that we're just going to adopt that today, so we're just going to hear it, but it's not for immediate adoption. Oh, it shouldn't be on second reader. Is that what the issue is?
Yeah.
Say it again. Correct. So it should be done. But she's saying that we need to say that it's adopted, not it's going on third reader? So for the, for the, for our due diligence, what we're going to do is, we're just going to vote on it again, and we'll just call it as adopted. If there's any cleanup, we'll clean it up at the next council hearing. So just doing in accordance with our Executive Secretary. Thank you so much, Tiffany. So, Madam Clerk, if you could please read in again, 22 dash zero-one-two-R. One-two-five-R.
Two-two dash zero-one-two-five-R, informational hearing, occupancy permits, inspections, and code enforcement.
At this time, is there a motion?
No.
Is it second?
No.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This resolution is adopted. At this time, we're going to go and adjourn. Again, there aren't any question. First, Councilman Glover.
I just want to ask that, before we leave for the evening, if some of the council, you guys are available, you know, the kids just want you guys to sign the basketball for their coach and for their school. So if anybody got any time, just go over to the overflow room, and we greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get pizza and some wings if you want to.
Thank you, Councilman Glover. Councilman Cohen?
Mr. President, if we could ask for a quick moment of silence for Ella Broadway, who passed away this last week. She was the president of the O'Donnell Heights Tenant Council for many, many years. Knew Councilman Glover, myself, was a mentor to a lot of us, and passed away this last weekend. I would appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. And before we adjourn, Councilman Porter, could you make sure that Vice President has the name?
Yeah.
You have the name?
I have the name.
The body would like to recognize Councilwoman Ramos. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also, a moment of silence for Vinnie Quail. He was the executive director and founder of St. Ambrose Housing Aid Center for over 40 years, recently passed away. He was one of the first ones to really call out blockbusting and our racial housing, racist housing policies, and created St. Ambrose to work through and help homeowners. So we want to recognize him today. The services are on the 10th. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional announcements? Hearing and seeing no, Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The next meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, April 17th, 2023, at 5:00 PM. At this time, we will recognize a moment of silence for the 67 victims of homicide this year and more than 1,975 Baltimoreans who have died from COVID-19 since the beginning of the pandemic, and also for Ella Broadway, Selena Ella Hines, and Vina, Vinnie Quail.
Thank you. There being no new business before the desk, this will conclude the 54th meeting of the 73rd term of your Baltimore City Council. Baltimore, we love you.